Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Vary this place. Heavenly Father, thank you for staying in Washington. Our Father who is still with us, who built this commission we had in our mind, Heavenly Father, do us that with the hand. It was now a week back, right? Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. I've had a chance to put your kind of message. Yes, sir. Change your practice. Change your... Motion to set. Top of the pane of motion.
Yeah.
Very second. All papers may on. Drive to the drive. I had a clerk come here. Rick? You want to get back to work very quick?
We'll give him time to warm up. Morning.
Good morning.
Oh, yeah. All right. First up, we have a road inventory thing. It is Glen Lane, also known as Church Road. The inventory shows point four one miles that he's corrected to point two five. That's Moncril Church. Only that's showing the new minutes. And I guess that's worded Glen Lane, AKA Church Road, because it shows up two ways. So just make sure I got my bases covered.
How long has that been a road?
At least twenty-five years.
No kidding?
We've got a little water issue back there, and that's how it's stumbled on the business.
Is it run right there beside the church?
If you go to the east end of the parking lot, it shoots back behind the east end of the parking lot. And you kind of got to pull out and go to the top of the hill to see if you can get out. Probably five blocks back in there.
So when I started yet?
June sixth, I think that's Monday. First Monday in June, I believe, when I start. It is currently point four one, and we need that corrected to point two five. Next up, I have the unofficial detour agreement. They're going to close down thirty-nine again. I need to get some signatures on this. The unofficial detour will be Mount Road, Cypress Road, behind the stopyards, and you'll come out on thirty-nine again. I'm going to create a lot of work all around, so I might want to do this next week.
What are they doing on thirty-nine?
Replacing it. Not too far from fifty-six.
So talk about a week maybe, probably? Is it rich, I don't know.
Yeah, I believe it's finished. It's not over due to that. I haven't checked on it. We haven't opened our road backups yet.
Appreciate you putting aside my chair on that day.
One's coming up. I don't know if you know where we were sawing it, it was the top of Newport Nobbs.
Yeah.
They're going to replace the culvert there under the road. So the detour, the unofficial detour is going to be the old Nobbs there.
Oh, one.
And big trucks are supposed to be by sixty-five. There's one that sinks through.
Every year, we had a paper drive at Beacon. And all of them, what did we get as paper? Every year? We didn't have, there wasn't a detour needed. We'd always think that Nobbs coming back up, coming back home.
GPS on that way, you might be surprised. Let's see. The small structure that we're having replaced on Dutch Creek by three thirty-five. Construction is scheduled to begin the third week of May. I'm looking for maybe a, I don't know, three-week closure for the board so once they get the footage and everything done. Shouldn't take too long. After that, the community crossings, you're all aware, we received the million-dollar community crossing grant. It's currently being advertised. The bid opening will be at the meeting May seventeenth. And one thing I kind of want to touch on. Everybody, you know, we get a million dollars, we've done it four years now, so it's kind of business as usual. Whereas four years ago, it was like woo-hoo. And one thing people get the misconception that we get that million dollars, so we have extra money. And I just kind of want to clear that up. That million dollars is over here, and then we have to match it. Plus, we have to get those roads ready. And if you're looking at forty thousand dollars of culverts, there's probably twenty to thirty thousand engineering. So we have to take four hundred thousand out of our regular highway budget to go with this million. So it's not likely we end up with a million extra. We're actually investing four hundred thousand. So it's not really extra, it's actual cost. But we do give them, it's a blessing that we can overwhelmingly not pay them for it.
Have you heard anything on the prices?
Last I knew, asphalt from sixty-five dollars is done seventy-four. That's a pretty big jump. And we're not there, we're not starting yet. He didn't anticipate any more big jumps. But that adds up pretty bad.
Yeah.
If I have any questions on the community crossings, I've got a truck update for you. As usual, everything's good news. We're supposed to start getting them two at a time, starting at the end of this month. Now, the first one is going in the shop. The tandem, if you recall, the tandem, but currently had an insurance replacement. It's going in the shop, has a debt put on it, the thirteenth. Estimated three weeks in the shop before it's finished. And then supposedly, three weeks after that, three weeks after that, we'll get another one. But the final one chose to go in the shop in September.
These are two-year-old trucks then, or?
Yeah. And the trucking, let's see, Kentucky truck. The trucking company called me, and they delivered the trucks. They're up there, all the, you know, their parts are done there. So they're starting to inquire about their money because they have to pay interest on it. So they want us to go ahead and repair the trucks and blame the bed company on that. The way it was bid was all one unit, the way we've got the money set up is all the one units. So I feel like when we get the trucks, we'll pay for them.
Well, I think the state says you can't pay for them, you have to pay the rent. So like, it'd be illegal for us to pay them.
He told me he'd like to have his money, and I told him I'd like to be on the blacktop bill.
That's not real. I mean. He should have known that with the bids.
And Monday, we're going to start mowing in all three districts. And all three districts are currently spreading them. And I think that's all I've got for you. Appreciate it.
Stay.
Yep. The list for us, you know, we were going to kind of wait on our new trucks to show up. I can't get rid of trucks, so I have a new one, so that's road engine things for me.
Do you have any other thing?
We have, I know we've got probably three or four chainsaws up top and a couple pole saws, small things like that.
Can you come up with a list for us that we can turn in?
No problem.
And to be honest with you, I mean, if we can hold off on the auction itself, could you give us the list of the trucks that you will be selling? Whatever you want, wherever you're going to sell. Come up with a list, and we won't do nothing until we get them.
You said you were going to say it going forward, didn't you?
Yeah. It's a hard, hard time yet. When we get them or rather off, just stick with them.
You're probably right.
And was the city, I'm going to take one of the cars. The city was interested in one of the same. Any good is give us a list of if you're going to sell Tiffany's desk or what. On the field.
You want to do that?
Please do.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Rick. Are you?
I am Abby Clark.
If you want to move forward, please. Abby's with the Office of Attorney General. Morning. You have a nice drive this morning?
Yes, wonderful day. Are you okay tomorrow?
Going fine. You've got the floor. Take your time.
So I'm from the Indiana Attorney General's office, and I'm the Southeast Indiana Outreach Director. Washington County is one of my counties, so I'm just here to say hello, give you a little information about our office. If you've got any questions, please feel free to ask. So, as your Indiana Attorney General, child abuse penal works to protect your rights. Your right to live your life in an environment free from deceptive and predatory practices where unclaimed assets are returned to you as quickly as possible. Where tax dollars are protected from Medicaid fraud. Where our businesses are protected from cyber fraud. From our all our citizens, from our elderly citizens who have lived and served our country and communities. To our businesses on which we depend for jobs and economic opportunity. What are these resources we offer that does all of that? Well, we have Consumer Protection Division. In Indiana, our Consumer Protection Unit in 2020 received approximately twenty thousand calls and opened approximately fourteen thousand five hundred complaints. Why do we have so many calls or complaints? Well, we conduct investigations and take legal action in response to the Subs and Consumer Sales Act, state and federal privacy laws, and other consumer-related statutes. We do this by protecting against identity theft, by educating consumers on how to keep their data privacy safe. We actually meet with governments and businesses and just any group that's interested in hearing about common scams, how to better protect themselves. Tools that you can use to keep your data safe, as well as what are your responsibilities in the case of a data breach? Very recently, we had an issue where there was an extreme breach of information in a telephone company. And we went in and were investigating to see, did they have enough security to keep their consumers safe? That's something we do in our investigations. So between 2019 and 2020, ransomware attacks rose by sixty-two percent worldwide. And for North America alone, they rose a hundred and fifty percent.
You said, would you say that again?
Yeah, and between 2019 and 2020, ransomware attacks rose by sixty-two percent worldwide. And for North America alone, it rose a hundred and fifty percent in this one-year time period. Most recently, we're seeing a lot of the data breaches affect more people. So when there is a data breach, it's in larger companies, and more people's personal information is being used. So something our office most recently did is we're actually going on the dark web. And we're investigating where those data breaches, where that information is being sold, and we're tracking that. We're trying to find those actors as well. And that's something we're constantly doing, especially with your phone privacy. I know that you will probably receive those robo-calls that are super annoying. Well, our office is now working with telecommunications companies to further our, further our technology in how we investigate and stop those actors. Most recently, we litigated a company that allowed people from India to use their company. They were paying to do this, to then call a UAL in the state of Indiana. And we said, no, that's legal, don't do that. We have a Medicaid fraud control unit. This is in cases on the provider's side where the provider is stealing money from either Medicaid funds or they're not providing services they said they would provide, or they're stealing medications themselves. Or in cases where there's clear signs of abuse and neglect of elderly residents and Medicaid programs. So that's something to do as well. I worked in that unit, we work really hard. And actually, from 2009 to 2020, our investigation split three hundred and sixty criminal convictions and more than three hundred and fifty million dollars in recoveries back to Indiana taxpayers. So we're really impressed. We also have our advisory division, this is something I'm interested in, it was a government group. What we do is if you ask your state legislator to give it, to ask us to give an opinion on state law. This is especially important when session closes and new laws are created or laws are amended. You can ask your state legislator, hey, what does this law mean for us? And then we'll give you an opinion. It's not legally binding, but it's just our way of providing you information. We're not anyone's personal attorney, so this is the way we can actually give you some information on the law. Finally, my favorite part is our unclaimed property division. What is unclaimed property? Well, it is any financial asset that has no activity for three years, goes into our unclaimed property fund. It's held there for twenty-five years, and then it goes to the state's general fund. This can be your money in forms of unclaimed wages or commissions, savings and checking accounts, stock dividends, underlying shares. Pretty much any time that you have money that cannot get to you, this may be moved, or they don't have the correct address. It goes to unclaimed property. So last year, we returned more than thirty-nine million, two hundred eighty-four thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars back to Indiana taxpayers. We're constantly doing it, it's one of my favorite things to do, I do unclaimed property tables. And we had someone buy fourteen thousand dollars at the Indiana State Fair last year. Really important to check that. You can do that by going to indianaunclaimed.gov, or you can text MINEIN46220. And make sure you check these level ones as well, if you're the heir keeping the fair.
Are you finding more?
I'm sorry?
Are you finding more in governments' offices being invaded by cyber?
Yeah, I mean, I meet with a lot of government offices, and number one, there's some standards that you have to follow to keep your data safe. You can be legally liable if you're not up to date, so make sure you're doing that. But more than that, I mean, there's phishing emails where they act like somebody else in the office, and then they email that person asking for information or password or something like that, and it's very convincing. Recently, I believe with the assessment office, there's been a home title scam in which they're sending an official document from the assessment office saying you have to pay ninety dollars to have your home titled. It's one dollar. At the assessment office, you just walk in, for one dollar, you get your home titled. And that's something that's commonly going around right now in Southeast Indiana, so definitely look out for that. And in cases that's happening, always make sure you raise a consumer complaint with us. We have no way of tracking them, and most people are telling us, hey, this happened to me. And that goes for robo-calls as well. So if you get a robo-call, write the number down. And once you have a list or just one number, raise a consumer complaint with us, we can track that. And it helps us better stop these people from calling you. I am.
You enjoy your job?
I do.
I do too.
Yeah, I, this is what I wanted to do, so.
But I think, did you take the stairs up?
Yeah.
Should have took them there.
I know. I know, I remembered you, so it was a step, but.
Is there a number to call on those robo-calls?
So.
Attorney General or?
Yeah, so we have our do not call list on our website. So sign up for that. And then we also have, that's the consumer complaint protection. So if you sign up for the do not call list, and then you also raise those consumer complaints with those numbers that you're receiving. And that improves text as well, because we're actually working really hard on improving our technology to track those text messages that people are finding are extremely bothersome. That's how you would do that, to keep yourself.
Do you have a card?
I do, I have a question with them.
Good.
Please, anytime, anything, have any questions. Something I've done for commissioners in the past is I've done exploratory meetings, whether it be substantive use of mental health, and I'm currently doing a lot of healthcare, I have some different resources for Medicaid. If our office doesn't do it, it doesn't mean I say, oh, just don't do it. It means I can look to all of the scenes that we have relationships with, and I find you a good contact and some good information. So please contact me, do absolutely anything. I have a cell phone on here that would like to text, you can text, whatever you'd like to do.
Do you have any more questions?
I have one quick.
Go.
Abby, to the extent you can speak briefly about the status of the opioid zone?
Yes, I cannot speak on that legally, but I do have a document that I can send over to you that has that status on it. So if somebody has a card, so I can easily get up.
Sure, I'll give mine.
Awesome.
Well, I'll, let's wait a little.
Yeah, definitely.
You might have to be a moment.
Same way.
Yes? Good information.
Awesome.
I appreciate your work.
I appreciate you all taking the time and wanting to come speak to me. Thank you.
It's going to make it easier.
Elevators, right?
Right outside the door.
I'm probably going to stay for a little bit, if that's okay.
That's fine.
I like to listen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our insurance gentleman, did you pay attention to that last statement?
I did.
Now she's your attorney on insurance, is that that one?
I gave it lots over that one.
You didn't have good news like after us?
I hope not. Don't check today, don't check today.
Good for me.
It's in the mail, right?
Hey, if you made this for me, can I report to this for what you're covering up?
Literally through the organization that I'm understood.
Lower Jersey. I've got your own regis.
Yes, well, early indications was what the request by you to see where the health insurance and commercial insurance stands for one one. It's pretty far out there, but I reached out with CUMANA. They did offer like last year, an early renewal offer. And they hope that they can do that again this year. So last year, it was the flat renewal offer. And so they're looking like they will be giving us another offer like that. I'm thinking positive with that, with CUMANA. My suggestion is always to, you know, budget for ten percent, and I think that comes in less than that. And we're in good, good shape. Hopefully another flat renewal, but we'll see. On the commercial side, with the way things are right now with inflation, claims two years ago caused X, now obviously more. So that's, that's a hard one at this point, since we're just in May, to know where that will go later. As an industry, insurance, we are seeing trends that are, you know, across both commercial, personal lines, all of that. Those are typically going south right now.
What do you say on that one?
I, ten to fifteen, I would, I would say. There's, there has been some claim history going on. We did increase the coverages on the buildings as well. That's not going to show an increase, but it is something we can afford to handle.
Do you know, like our ambulances?
We've got a hundred percent replacement, right? Yes.
Yeah, they're covered a hundred percent total.
Correct.
What is the percentage on police cars?
So on police, the ACV versus replacement cost or the special launch endorsement that is on ambulances. What is covered under that in total would be fire trucks, ambulances, or hazardous material response vehicles. Those are the, that's the criteria. Sheriff vehicles being high risk, they are not in replacement cost valuation. I did, back in August sixteen, I did send an email just explaining that to the sheriff that those vehicles were not counted in that valuation. They're just on ACV, which values are higher, as we all, we all know right now. But it is not replace us on sheriff's.
Okay, you definitely.
The deductible, I might add it from you, but I believe it's just that that was dollars provided on us.
And we'd ask you at one time, if we go to some extra grounding up there at Justice Center? Say again? If we go to extra grounding on the building at the Justice Center? Can we get a lower rate if we do this?
Extra.
Grounding, grounding, liability protection.
Protection. Oh, extra grounding, likely.
Yes. On a discount for having that extra protection, I can, I can check on that.
Would you?
Yeah, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I will check.
I know we've had quite a few claims on some of the air conditioning affair, whatever.
They would love some radio here, they'll be happy to hold that.
I think it's, I think it's assumed that you had proper grounding again.
We do have grounding, but there is a better grounding.
Proper.
And that's what we're talking about.
Proper. Because there were some areas in that map that looked like it wasn't being grounded properly.
Okay.
There, there is one other thing that I was going to bring up is on the ancillary benefits. We have switched, and it's a seven one on the renewal for the dent. We did that, if you recall, due to a local provider that jumped out of the CUMANA network. There's a no-in-network provider in our family for, for that. That provider is moving away from Denimax, which is under the Nippon policy. So we're kind of back to square one with no-in-network provider. It's, it's tough, but I have found one. We, Tammy and I, we called all the local dentists to see if there's one that goes across the board. We are now pointed with Delta Dental, and it seems like everyone is in-network for Delta Dental. So I am going to put together a quote proposal with them and see how that matches up with the coverage that we have now. The main thing is trying to get a provider here, would have a little bit for the builders for the employees. I should be able to get those here fairly quickly on that. That's all, that's all I got.
Make sure.
Make sure today.
Make sure. Somebody try and get it right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm glad to get a check each time.
Pleasure we want. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Just very briefly, I'll mention, and you can speak to this if you'd like, Todd has sent me a draft of noise ordinance, proposed noise ordinance. So I've not really looked at it, but apparently that's in the works. So if there's any comments you guys would like to make at this one meeting, but I expect over the next two or three meetings, I'll, I'll have a draft of something and discuss it if you guys would like.
Tom?
No sir.
Rick?
No sir. No sir.
Kelsey, you come in, do you have anything? We only adjourn, right? Precess, precess, precess.
Or me.
Right?
Sixty-four. Tonight.
Catch you. Be there.
Thanks, everyone.